The governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to COVID-19 outbreak and all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village of President of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the September 16, 2021 village board meeting is not practical or prudent in light of disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in September 16, 2021 village board meetings, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear and one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Signed, Chodri Ami Koker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, dated September 16, 2021. Mr. Pat, can you hear?
Yes, I'm good.
Oh, great. I would like to call the village board meeting of Thursday, September 21, 2021 to order. Will the crowd please take the roll call?
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pocack?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. A public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on FY 2022 dash 2024 CDBG application regarding water main improvement projects. I call this public hearing open. Is there anyone from the public that wants to come forward and make a comment? If there is none, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing. First, Mr. Schmidt, second?
Move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, Mr. Light, Mike Light. Discussion, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
We will now move on to, public hearing is closed. We will move on to petitions and communications. Number one, community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is looking for hardworking individuals to join our team. We are now offering a variety of career opportunities for both full-time and part-time positions. The Parks, Recreation and Facilities Department is now hiring for a variety of recreation positions. The Center for Senior Citizens is hiring for customer service associates. And lastly, the Glendale Lakes Golf Club is hiring cooks, waitstaff and a dishwasher. For more information on these job opportunities or for additional career postings, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr or contact Human Resources at 630-909-5357. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, October 2nd at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui, please.
Thank you, President Koker.
You're very welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights encourages residents to bookmark the village website to your homepage of your smartphones. Our mobile-friendly website will give you a quick access to a variety of tools, including access to pay your water bill, important information about upcoming programs and events, report a concern and quick access to contact your district trustee or village president. The village website also has links to all village departments, including the Parks, Recreation and Facilities websites, Glendale Lakes Golf Club website and more. For more information or for assistance on adding the village website to home screen of your smartphone, please contact the Public Relations Division at 630-909-5348. Water bill assistance program. DuPage County is now offering a two-year crisis-only low-income household water assistance program. This program provides one-time assistance to prevent disconnection, restore a water connection and helps with fees associated to your water bill. The total benefit for one household is $1,500 for water and sewer. Residents can apply through DuPage County anytime during the two years this program is being offered. DuPage County staff will review your water and sewer bills to determine how much needs to be paid for the required service. If you are at risk of disconnection or your service has already been disconnected, you can call 630-407-6500. Thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Light, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is revving up for a 38th annual show and shine car show and swap meet at Camera Park this Sunday. That's right, this Sunday. September 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display along with swap meet, food and music. If you're interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download a registration form. If you're interested in volunteering, please do. Contact Nicole at 630-909-5327. We look forward to seeing you at the annual show and shine car show and swap meet this Sunday. Be there.
Thank you. Colerchamet, please.
Thank you. The village of Glendale Heights is partnering with the Northern Illinois Food Bank for a food distribution event on Saturday, October 9th from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Camera Park. You do not need to be a resident of Glendale Heights in order to receive assistance and no identification is required. We ask that you please wear a face covering and remain in your vehicle. Please drive slow and follow the directions from the staff and volunteers upon arrival. We want to thank all of the supporting organizations for your help in making sure no family or individual goes hungry. For more information or to volunteer, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. The Family Health and Safety Fair is canceled this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, the Family Health and Safety Fair Committee will still be offering a drive-through flu shot clinic on Saturday, October 9th from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Civic Center parking lot. The flu shot clinic is free and you do not need to be insured to receive the flu shot. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. And remember, get the shot, not the flu. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Trustee Pocack, please.
Thank you. Come out to Camera Park now through September 26th for Oktoberfest. Enjoy authentic German food and drink, live bands, dancing, entertainers and other family-friendly activities. For more information, including hours, entertainment schedule and admission fees, visit www.glandalehighs Welcome to the beginning of the fall season with a special fireworks show on Sunday, September 19th, beginning at dusk approximately 7:30 p.m. The 15-minute fireworks show will be held at Camera Park and will light up the night sky with a beautiful display. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome, ma'am.
Come on out to Heritage Park for some fishing fun on Saturday, October 2nd from 9:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. at the annual fishing derby in conjunction with Harvest Fest hosted by the village of Glendale Heights. The FOP Lodge 52 and the Glendale Fire Protection District. Try your luck at catching some of the trophy fishes like catfish, bluegill and bass that live in Lake Becerra. Registration begins at 9:00 a.m. and the derby begins promptly at 9:30 a.m. We will conclude the fishing derby with a trophy presentation and prizes. The fishing derby is a catch and release event. So for more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Also, come out and celebrate the fall season at Heritage Park on Saturday, October 2nd from noon to 4:00 p.m. at the annual Harvest Fest. Welcome autumn's arrival with music, crafts, hayrides, chili, cook-off and a back tournament, food and drinks, games and much more. This fall event is fun for the entire family with activities for everyone. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, ma'am. We have the following proclamation. A proclamation to proclaim the week of September 20 dash 26, 2021 as Rail Safety Week. A proclamation recognizing the retirement of Glenside Fire Protection District Fire Chief Russell J. Wood. If there is no objection, I will sign this proclamation.
No objection.
No objection, okay. We now move on to the appointment of deputy village president. At this time, I would like to appoint Trustee Pat Maritato as deputy village president. Can I have a motion to conquer with the appointment? Mr. Light, first.
Served.
Second.
Second, Trustee Schroeder. So there is none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocack?
Give me another minute to think about this. Oh, it's for Pat? Okay, I'll go get that.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The appointment of Trustee Pat Maritato as deputy village president is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Pat. How are you? Where are you? I can't see.
I'm good, thank you very much. Mayor and board.
Okay. Okay, so when you are bringing candy for me, you know, and the board?
Thank you.
Okay, welcome. Next is the recognition of the retirement of police officer Michelle Cahill. Chief Flint, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
You're very welcome.
Michelle. So we're here to recognize Michelle Cahill as her retirement coming up here October 4th for 30 years of dedicated service to the residents of Glendale Heights. And Michelle, people here are here for you. And you even got Dr. O'Shea to come out from Markort to help celebrate your 30-year career. I'd like to thank everybody, retired officers, current officers, family and friends, I'll go through some that are here, being here to recognize Michelle. I have spent my entire career with Michelle, or Michelle spent her entire career with me, I should say, good or bad as that is. 30 years anywhere is a long time and the department is about to get younger again. And we are losing in Michelle a consistent advocate for not just the residents but the younger residents of the village. And as I go through her career here a little bit, you'll understand why. But she's here tonight with her husband, Mike, her kids Jessica, Connor and Kayden. Her son couldn't make it here tonight, he's out flying somewhere in Alaska. Her sister Mindy is here and you guys might recognize her parents, Wayne and Lori Mortenson. They're very active at the senior center, they're residents. Michelle is one of six or seven police officers we have on the force that grew up in Glendale Heights, attended Glendale Heights schools and came back to Glendale Heights to serve the community very proudly. And for that, we thank you. Michelle went to Carthage College after graduating Carthage College. She got hired and appointed by the police department on October 2nd of 1991. She spent many years in patrol. Through her patrol and investigations time, she has accumulated 19 honorable mentions and countless stories and letters from residents thanking her for everything that she's doing for the kids and even one letter from a resident from Wheaton that you stopped and helped on a flat tire, pushed his car off the road while off duty. June 18th of 2006, she got promoted to Investigations Division where she served as a school resource officer. And she was instrumental then of implementing and upgrading our DARE program and really working with the school districts to really show what the presence of a school resource officer in the schools doing a professional job, looking out in the best interest of the kids, can do. She served her five years and 2011 was sent back to patrol, returned back to patrol. And then again in 2015, she applied for school resource officer again. And since 2015, she has been the Markort Middle School Resource Officer, serving that school district till she retires. She has been an advocate for kids. She's transformed and evolved the SRO position into one of the most highly contested positions and tested for positions we have in the police department because they see all the good that we're doing to help the youth and the community. She's taken ownership of it. There is nothing that Michelle can't do when it comes to the kids and the schools and working to just yesterday. She's two weeks from retirement and she went and had Wayne Avenue completely restriped to help with traffic flow, to help with bus flow, to help with pedestrian flow, still work on a couple other things there, but she is adamant about making the school safer and working with the police department and the schools to really build that relationship. Nothing, every assignment that was given, every task that was given to Michelle, you didn't have to ask 14 times about where it was at, you didn't have to do anything. Most of the time, it was just done for you and she was ready with everything. Thinking of words that describe Michelle, obviously caring, the three Cs, right? Caring, committed, professional. Honestly, I think the word that describes Michelle the most and besides compassionate, she has been loyal to the residents and the students of Glendale Heights for as long as you've been alive because you were born and raised here and you worked here and you're retiring here. And I think that's a testament to you and the commitment she's made to the residents. Everybody within the school community and the village is going to be at a loss on October 5th when you're not here. The police department has been better because of you, the school districts have been better because of you. And I just want to say thank you for all you've done for us and the police department and you've set the standard for every other person coming behind you. So I know Michelle's got some words she wants to say to the board and the residents and her fellow officers, current and retired. So Michelle, it's all yours.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm used to a younger crowd, fifth graders for the DARE graduations, so I'm a little bit nervous. October 2nd, 1991, I was a 21-year-old kid being sworn in as a police officer. A grown-up job right out of college, not quite sure what I was getting myself into or the direction it would take me in my life. All I knew was how excited I was to have this job and how proud I was to say I was a police officer. The same holds true now, except I'm 30 years older, 30 pounds heavier and wiser and cherish what I've gotten myself into and the direction it has taken me in my life. I married my husband, Mike, and we are raising four beautiful children whom we are so proud of, John, Jessica, Connor and Kayden. To say they are the most important reasons of my life is an understatement. But I would not be who I am today if it were not for my parents, Wayne and Lori Mortenson. The ups and downs, the goods and bads, they have supported and encouraged my choices, probably not knowing what to think about their daughter becoming an officer. We do not have a background of police officers in our family and as far as I know, I am the only one ever. They have always been there for me. Nothing, as we all know, can top family. In addition, I feel very lucky to have close second families, including my friends who are here to support me today. I have my fellow officers, coworkers, village employees and residents in the community. Over the years, the friendships I have made are very important to me. I've gotten to know such wonderful people. And finally, the well-kept secret to longevity in a police officer's career, being a school resource officer. My time working as an SRO for Markort District 15, Queen Bee District 16, Glen Oaks Therapeutic Day School, St. Matthew's School and Glenwood Academy, top any and all things I have done as a police officer. I have loved and enjoyed working with administrators and teachers with the one undisputed common goal of doing what's best for the kids. Last, but certainly not least, the children of Glendale Heights. I am proud to have known you and watched you grow up, whether I see you in the schools or Glendale Heights Fest, the Sports Hub, library, Walmart, McDonald's, Jewel, Walgreens, Portillo's, Target, Brookfield Zoo, to name a few. On duty in uniform or not, I will always remember those shy smiles as you came up to me and said hello and asked, "Do you remember me?" There was no better feeling. To all of you, I say with a quote that summarizes the philosophy of the DARE program, "Keep making those safe and responsible decisions." Thank you, village president Koker, village administrator Mike Maron, chief Flint, village trustees, Dr. O'Shea, Dr. Williams, Lisa Grisby, school administrators, my fellow officers and my family for the past 30 years of a successful and extremely rewarding career. Thank you.
Thank you. One. Two. Officer Michelle Cahill, appreciation for 30 years of dedicated service to the Glendale Heights Police Department and to the community.
I have a plaque for you. Mayor Koker has got a gift for you as well from the village and the board. And we have your retirement badge, it'll be here soon. So Mayor and Board, if ceremonially, we generally have about a 10 to 12-minute recess here for pictures with Michelle and her family and friends to recognize her retirement. So Mayor, if I could ask for you to put the meeting into recess? We're now going to recess? Thank you.
We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? So none? We will continue with the concert agenda. You have the concert agenda before you. Would village administrator, Mr. Michael Maron, please read the concert agenda?
Certainly, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So number one is the approval of the regular board meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2021. Number two is the approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2021. Number three, the approval of accounts payable listing of September 16th, 2021 in the amount of $1,359,604.96. Number four is an ordinance to amend Section 11-2-2 entitled definitions of Chapter 2 entitled Rules and Regulations and Section 11-4-12 entitled temporary uses of Chapter 4 entitled general zoning regulations and Section 11-4-13 entitled general business regulations of Chapter 4 entitled general zoning regulations and Section 11-10B-2 entitled permitted uses of Article B entitled C2 Community Commercial District of Chapter 10 entitled Commercial District and Section 11-10C-2 entitled permitted uses of Article C entitled I Light Industrial District of Chapter 11 entitled Office, Business Park and Industrial District, all contained in Title 11 entitled zoning regulations, excuse me, of the Admissible Code of ordinances of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This pertains to outdoor storage and is ordinance number 2021-64. Number five is an ordinance to amend Article C entitled Transfer of Real Estate Inspections of Chapter 14 entitled Licensing and Inspection of Properties of Title 10 entitled Building Regulations of the Village Code of the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is the amendment to the real estate transfer regulations and it is ordinance 2021-65. Number six is a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the DuPage County Department of Community Services and the village of Glendale Heights in connection with the low-income home water assistance program. This is Resolution 2021- This is Resolution 2021-R-90. Number seven is a resolution to approve an application for outdoor pyrotechnic display permit for the Village of Glendale Heights. This is Resolution 2021-R-91. Number eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of FY 2022 to 2024 DuPage County Neighborhood Investment Communitywide Benefit Accessibility Improvements and Planning Projects, CDBG, Application 1 for the Norton Avenue and East Schubert Avenue Water Main Replacement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights. This is Resolution 2021-R-92. Number nine is a resolution authorizing the execution of fiscal year 2022 to 2024 DuPage County Neighborhood Investment Communitywide Benefit Accessibility Improvements and Planning Projects, CDBG, Application 2 for the Jill Court and Maryland Avenue Water Main Replacement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights. This is Resolution 2021-R-93. Number 10 is a resolution authorizing the execution of fiscal year 2022 to 2024 DuPage County Neighborhood Investment Communitywide Benefit Accessibility Improvements and Planning Projects, CDBG, Application 3 for the Cambridge Lane and Westchester Drive Water Main Replacement Project in the Village of Glendale Heights. This is Resolution 2021-R-94. Number 11 is a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes. This is Resolution 2021-R-95. Number 12 is a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional design engineering services for the North Avenue Inflow and Infiltration Repairs Phase 2. This is Resolution 2021-R-96. Number 13 is a resolution approving and authorizing the purchase and planting of approximately 60 Parkway trees in the Village of Glendale Heights, Resolution 2021-R-97. And 14 is the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Maron. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion. Mr. Pojek, second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Trustee Schroder. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so we will move on to new business. New business. There is a request to waive first reading on new business items 2 through 4. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item 2 through 4? First, trustee Light.
So moved, please.
Second, trustee Schmidt. Discussion. No discussion, so roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
First reading is waived on new business items 2 through 4. Next, number 2. An ordinance to approve and authorize zoning variance for 311 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Express Superwash and Detail Shop from the September 2nd, 2021 COW. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2021-66. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2021-66?
Motion to approve.
Trustee Siddiqui, first.
Second.
Trustee Pojek, second. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-66 is approved. Number 3. An ordinance granting conditional uses to permit an automobile laundry and automobile detail shop for the property located at 311 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Express Superwash and Detail Shop from the September 2nd, 2021 COW. First reading is waived. This ordinance 2021-67. Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2021-67? Trustee Schroder?
So moved.
Second.
Second, trustee Siddiqui. No discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-67 is approved. Number 4. An ordinance rejecting all bids for the swing set installation at Allman Park and awarding the contract to Hacienda Landscaping and Corporation. First reading is waived. This ordinance 2021-68. Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2021-68? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Paul.
Keith, regarding this installation, are they on time, on schedule, because everyone's running short?
So, the contract, this contractor is going to both arrange the new playground area and install. Installation of the swing set will be later in the season or early in the spring, depending on when it comes in. It has a 12-week lead time.
All right, thank you.
Why we are rejecting all the bids and just awarding this, is there any particular reason for that?
Our purchasing agent, Darcy, will be able to answer that question for you.
Yes, what happened was Hacienda was actually the low bidder for the project. However, they inserted a wrong number in. They inserted a number to add 2. We wanted to award the alternate bid. We actually formatted the bid was there was a smaller area to be done. It was the minimum area to install the swings. We then listed an alternate bid, which was a larger area, to change the landscape of the park a bit. And we did that because we didn't know how much the bids were going to come in at. So, when the bids came in so well, we wanted to award the alternate bid. Well, since he had inserted a wrong number in there, but his intent was to do this for $23,100, and that was a very good price, we decided to reject bids and award them just the contract.
Okay, how many bids did we get?
We got 2 bids.
What's the other bid?
The other bid was from Klos Brothers, and their bid for that same area was $32,053.50.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Keith, I have another question for you. If you're going to change the, oh, wait till you get the mic. You're going to change the landscaping, what Darcy just mentioned, is there any additional cost?
That's all included in that. What it's doing is it's squaring off that piece of property and taking out, it's been put together in like 3 pieces, so this will make it look like it's one congruent piece.
All right, thanks, Keith.
Keith, I have a question. Now, between the 2 different companies, there was like about a $6,000 difference. Was there, how much difference was there in the equipment that they were installing? Was the swing set, was the swing set installation a little bit better than the Hacienda one?
So, the, both these bids are both the work on the playground area and the installation. We actually purchased the swing set separate of this. So, that's done separately. That's not included in this price.
Oh, it's not included in the price?
It is not.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? No. Ordinance 2021-68 is approved.
We have to vote.
Roll call, please, vote, please.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Absolutely.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
All done, okay. Ordinance 2021-68 is approved. We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items? None. There is no exact session, so I will seek motion for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Pojek?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
Mr. Light, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Schmidt, you have the committee of the whole.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Thursday, September 16th, 2021, has called the order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee Siddiqui?
Water billing.
Anybody else? Okay, are there any public comment about anything? Okay, no public comment. There are no committee recommendations, so we have discussion regarding the termination of TIF number 1. Mr. Maron?
I'm going to refer to Community Development Director Joanne Couchbrunner.
Thank you. TIF District number 1, which is the North Avenue and Bloomingdale Road TIF, Glen Ellen, the TIF, I'm sorry, North Avenue and Glen Ellen, was established April 3rd, 1997. That's the Menards and Dodge Jeep TIF District area, the shopping center. All TIF districts are established by legislation for 23 years. That's the maximum that a TIF district can go, and this district is now expired. It expires at the end of the year because we get the taxes for the TIF district a year after the last, so as you pay your taxes in arrears, we collect the taxes in arrears. So, this is our, this is the last year that we will be collecting taxes, so we are now obligated to terminate the TIF district, and from now on, it will go back. The increment, I'm just, I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with TIF districts, it freezes the taxes at the point of inception, and then the increment, the changes in the tax dollars go into a special fund to be spent within that area of land. So, the village has been very successful in redevelop, in encouraging development. Again, as I mentioned, the Dodge dealership, the Jeep dealership, all benefited from the TIF district with FEMA grant of $1.3 million. That was added to TIF revenues to help some, with some flooding in the area, to reduce flooding along North Avenue, if everyone recalls some of that, and in the shopping center. So, it has been extremely successful. So, the TIF does need to expire. We will be bringing an ordinance forward to the village board at the next meeting, and then we will notify the taxing districts, and then that full value of the TIF district will go on, back onto the tax rolls, so that will benefit all the remaining taxing districts. Noted in your memo is the current frozen value is $2.2 million right now, and the current value is 11, over $11 million. So, that all will be helpful to the school districts, fire districts, to get that back on to the rolls. We are retaining the money that is in the account, just in case we have some lagging costs. So, by law, we are allowed to keep what's in the fund for a period of years, just to make sure that there's nothing that's outstanding.
If I could just add to remind everyone what that district was, I mean, Joanne's talked about what it is now, but that was the vacant venture store that had been vacant for quite some time. There was a dilapidated golf range and a dilapidated mini golf course that was on that property, and some, a couple of old homes that were fairly dilapidated as well. So, the improvement that that TIF district has accomplished has really been remarkable in that area.
Yeah, Joanne, maybe this is for Mr. Pauling. The money, the district, the TIF district, the interest, how much do we absorb out of that? Any idea?
There wouldn't be any interest, Greg. There's no interest.
No interest at all? Oh, okay. That's all I had, Joanne. Thank you.
Trustee Miratato?
Hard to see you.
Joanne, how much money do we have in this fund?
That, I don't know.
That is Bill.
That one, I will defer to Bill Pauling and put him on the spot. I don't know if he has that.
We're going through the audit of fiscal 2021 right now. We won't have final figures until probably sometime late October, but I would tell you that we think that the estimate is somewhere around a half a million dollars.
Okay, now, do we, after a while, do we keep this money?
You, as Joanne mentioned earlier, we're going to keep the money in the fund to resolve any tax appeals that might be forthcoming. If you can recall, there was a tax objection that we just settled a couple of years ago. It was back from 2008. So, these things take a very long time to come to fruition. So, the money would stay in the TIF fund, and it would be restricted until these, any tax appeals would be resolved.
Okay, so we couldn't, we couldn't take that, we couldn't take that money out and like invest it and get some interest on it, money back on that money? Like a return?
Yes, trustee Miratato, you could, you could invest the money, I believe, I looked to my attorney to answer the question.
I think Pat's ultimate question is, is if, once the time passes, does the village get to keep that money? Is that your, is that your question, Pat?
Yes.
Like, just absorb it into our general fund or whatever? Is that what you're asking?
Right. Can we keep, I mean, is that our money to keep?
No, that is not.
It's not.
That money would be returned to the taxing districts, is my understanding.
Oh, okay. That was my question.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were getting at, but yeah, it does not, it does not get to keep that money.
Okay, thank you.
You said there was no interest. Why would you put this much money into a non-bearing interest account?
So, the short answer is that all of the funds of the village are invested in one bank account. It's our checking account. And if any of you have any investment knowledge right now, interest rates are pretty much zero. So, for a long time, even though we have a considerable amount of money in the bank, we're not getting hardly any interest at all.
All right, thank you.
Any other? Okay, I assume there is no recommendation for action on our part.
It was just informative, yeah.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing, no further discussion. Trustee Siddiqui?
Yeah, my question is to Bill, do you have any status where we are with our complaint about the water billing online thing? Did we get any resolution from the company or?
I want to give this to Joanne because she's been giving me all the questions. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So, Central Square Technologies, that's the company that provides our application software. Providing- provides our application software, provided an update that they, the problem, in their words, is a visual problem. An individual can go on to the water billing online payment site, and they can change their bill preference to e-bill. The problem is that when they click that box, and then they click submit, the program goes back to, as you know, the program goes back to paper and e-bill.
Yes.
Now, Central Square is saying that behind the scenes, that the system has actually made the change, and we proved that through testing. It's just that the resident doesn't get that experience that, oh, it looks like it's changed. So for, once they've selected e-bill, they'll get three subsequent paper bills, just to make sure that everything's working okay, and then it would go to just e-bill. So what Central Square is saying in the last update that I received is that they're working to change the message that the user gets when they click the submit button, to say something simple like, yes, your change has been received.
Yeah.
Very simple. And when we get the next update, that should be taken care of.
So after three months, then this change is going to take effect?
That's correct.
And do you know when their contract is going, getting be over or?
Their contract is in sync with the village's fiscal year, so this is the last, the last year of that contract.
Okay.
But this is the contract for all of the application of the village, all of the financial application of the village.
Yeah, because I would really recommend to President Coker that we should look into this as we are, you know, village, that to move forward with the current IT standard because the, what I had examined, or what I had seen in the past three months, we are really using the whole technology. I'm seeing Cheryl, Rachel, sorry, at access database and in which when the user, any resident call, the call comes into the public works department. So they have, they, they put up in pen and paper, and then it goes to the access database. So that's a really primitive technology. I would say access database, not any, anyone is using that one. It's, it's way primitive. Now we have a cloud, we have much better options, and I would recommend that you should either form a committee or, or some things to look into that. So because I, what I am looking forward is, because I get some also complaints about from the residents that when they call to the village, they put on hold, and they have been transferring from here and there. So what I am looking for is, and as I am seeing the other villages are doing, that you really don't have to call, you should have it on your phone, with your smartphone and with the app. You can launch, you can register a complaint or any concerns of your, and it should be directed to the right department. And that can be achievable. That's not something that cannot be done, but we have to look into that. They are, we can invite the bids from different companies. We can look into that because I really don't want, just for this water bill, just an example, this company's square trade. I mean, I, this is like my fourth attempt. I tried to change my credit card. I've been in the IT for the last twenty years, and I wasn't able to do it. So I'm really embarrassed, and I'm, I think I'm not doing the job properly in IT, maybe, because I, I'm, I have no clue how to change that. I tried so many different ways. I can see my credit card, but if I want to change it, I am unable. So these all things makes it really hard for the residents also. I'm just thinking from the perspective of residents, that if they want to do that, it's really hard for them to do. So it shouldn't be that hard. It should be simple, and we shouldn't be having three months of period of anything to implement the, the paperless bill, because still the city is paying for those three months, and square trade should absorb that. So, so I would recommend to you that if you can form some committee or some kind of, because their contract is coming to an end, and we should be looking for different new avenues where we can have our, especially the, the permit fees, the permit, all that, because right now you can print the permit, and you have to scan it, but you still have to call the city and give your credit card over the phone. You really don't need to do that. You can just submit it with your, there should be a form, there should be an information about your credit card, and once you submit it, it should execute, and the city should get the money from the credit card, and the, the form should go to the right department. So these are all the things which needs to be looked into it, and, and we should, looking forward to put the city with according to the twenty-first century, because the technology which we are using is way old.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee, for your recommendation, and chair is Mr. Trustee Schmidt, you know, number one, number two.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Maron is there, you know, so if, with the permission of Mr. Smith, trustee Smith, if Mr. Maron can answer, you know.
Well, I mean, certainly if, if it's the, the direction of the board to put together some, some type of a technology committee, you know, without a doubt, we can get some presentations in and show what different financial reporting software is available, and the different software that is there, and the cost of that. I will say, trustee Siddiqui, one of the things that you talked about was being able to report a concern that goes directly to a department. We currently have that available on our website right now. So you could go to the village website, do a report of concern. It would send it directly to either the community development department, finance department, depending on the, the nature of the complaint. But, you know, certainly the, the concept of, of taking a look at the financial reporting software is something that, that perhaps the, the village board should take a look at. Okay. Any further comments? There being nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second his motion.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.